Twenty twenty two, I believe. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, looking at the agenda, not too many things, but I'm sure there's some highlights in here. Um, public forum, we have one appointment. Uh, new business, we're gonna discuss and ideally approve the special town meeting warrant. And we'll chat about some old business, perhaps including the interim town administrator's report. And we'll look to conclude with a minute's approval from August sixteenth. Um, with that being said, I'll see if there's any public forum in our participants.
I have something that was. Can I speak in public?
You may as a resident of the town.
Should I sit over there?
Please.
Um, Chief War called me today, uh, and. He was approached by. I guess it was Groton Police Department and they're wondering if they could use ninety-one River Street to do an ATV training session. He was under the impression that that had been used before, maybe, I don't know, Harold, do you remember that ever been ninety-one River Street ever been used for ATV training?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the police, no dustable people are gonna be participating in this, so.
This been used before.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess I don't. Really have a problem because there is already a track there. I, what kinda just makes me somewhat hesitant is generally the aesthetics of it is. We're not. You don't allow these on the properties.
Well, we don't allow the public.
Right.
On the property, but you know, if. Kingsborough fires and everybody begin training up there, would we say yes? Right, I mean.
Well, that's, that is exactly what.
But and if Gro- if Dunstable fire ask for everyone do a training operation. I'd be thrilled to know.
We don't, which they did, they did the house, yeah.
Yeah.
We, uh, we had ATVs down, we police by, how come?
We do.
How come we're not participating?
It's only for newer folks, I guess, that have signed up for the course.
Yeah, it's in order to get a certification, so they have to be.
If we had any of that wanted to, they probably.
Yeah, it's a four hour ride.
Four hour ride. It's a one-shot deal, yeah, it's like max eight. Um, he said that everybody would be covered by their own policies. So. I don't think they're, uh, this was brought up with, but Jim Tully was concerned about that at one point. So, they're really. Yeah.
I think because it's, you know, public out there and it indemnifies the town from responsibility. Because we've had people.
Yeah.
On our own other trails get hurt and the town's not responsible for their care. I guess as a re- resident, like, you know, the neighbors up there may not be thrilled because we sort of put the.
We admonished them for using it.
Right. But I think it's for.
It's a one-shot, you know, that one.
Yeah.
Ideally.
Yeah. Probably.
I think it's a good opportunity to be a good neighbor to our neighbor and police departments and. Um, I'm glad to hear that we're gonna get more people capable of riding off-road, that's really a valuable skill and certification. So, I would. Unless you have a real strong.
No, I don't, I just want that's. I agree with you, I, I mean, we are specifically granting them permission to do it and those that are riding don't specifically have permission to do it and. It is a vehicular trespass under those circumstances, so.
Yep.
But with permission and, you know, it, it is, there is specific purpose and they're not out there trashing the place either, they're.
Yeah.
Well, uh. Well, then you.
I doubt it.
I doubt it. You know, one side it's fishing game, on one side it's. River Street and then on the other side it's.
Is probably.
It's Pat and us.
St. Anne's, um.
Yeah.
Property.
I think they're kinda covered in that respect. So, I would entertain, uh, I don't know if it'd be necessarily an emotion or just a.
Wow.
It's a, it's kind of a formal request, so maybe it's important to just.
What's the date on that? Cause wait until the meeting, when it's on reagenda? Seeing, I guess.
I don't know when it is, let me, maybe.
I, I don't wanna hold back on basis of that.
Yeah.
Or we could make a motion to okay the usage.
Due to that, then, right? Since it's not on, uh, agenda under public forum.
No, well, but you can't address things.
Noticing, yeah, you know, if a, uh, resident. Came in with a specific issue and talked about it for twenty minutes and then the board voted to do something. It wasn't adequate public notice for the other residents that may be impacted by that, so.
Well, then, as the board chair, I think that chair position reserves the right to approve a usage of the town, right? It's not. So I think we could okay it in that plan.
I, I don't see any risks to this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're doing it.
Complaints, yeah.
As long as it's not. I don't wanna put anyone on the gun, you know, if it's Monday, they're trying to do it, it's a holiday. They won't have a meeting before now and then.
And then just consider it something that wasn't. Uh, deliberated, you know, a certain period of time with the forty-eight hour.
Right.
The posting of the, so you could technically do a lot on that.
Right, well, yeah, I did just got the phone call. Because you didn't answer your phone.
It's true, I answered later on. So I already knew what the topic was.
Given the timeline, so the two of it's happening and there's not another meeting scheduled in between.
Yeah.
Then I think there, there has been sleep around.
Okay, since you give us a date, we can put that into a motion.
Okay.
Well, we can come back to it, can we?
Yeah. Yeah, we can. You're right, let's, let's go on.
Uh, the only other thing I know that I just saw that, speaking in public forum, was the activity on the trails with some hooks being hung from the trees. And you catch, yeah, you catch that civil Facebook, uh, some hikers were out. Um, the Spalding Proctor Reservation Trail. And, uh, I believe it was two instances where a green sort of high, like sea fishing line. Had a pretty sizable hook hanging from.
Oh, hooks, fishing.
Like hooks, like, you know, at various, these two various heights here that. You were on a horseback or you were on a quad or you were walking and you were an NBA basketball player, I think you were gonna get dinged by these things. Our police department did a nice job responding to that.
So they weren't just a miscast in getting stuck in the tree, these were deliberately hung inland on. It's a seventeen.
So we got some time.
Yeah.
Uh, that was the interpretation from. What I read online, I caught up with Eric about it specifically, but, uh, but they did a nice job responding. People are using those areas as well as other trails in town with mechanized vehicles. I don't know if that's related to it or it was just somebody being a jerk.
Yeah.
But. The, the police department doing a nice job responding to things.
That's good.
Which is unfortunate, I, I don't like that people feel that way. I wish the mechanized vehicles didn't use our trails as they do for racing, they're, they're racing behind our house like they're flying.
Oh, it's, and it's the, the degradation caused by it is.
Like now there's like dummies gripped in.
Right.
By the tires.
If that wasn't the case.
They, they open field with some by the Autobahn Society, there's a conservation, like thirty acres of conservation land, you know, on that. And one time you came out and they were riding across my front yard. They wanted to go down into the woods across.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it, it just broke.
They just don't care.
They had like a, a mulch island with plants on it, they rode right.
Yeah.
The arrogance of it is the most. Annoying component of it, be one thing if they rode nicely, didn't trash the trails, didn't throw their beer cans in the woods.
They, you know, I mean. Finding those cartridges in our trail.
Yeah.
Sounds, they're all over the place. But, I mean, it is what it is, I know some people are actually quite frustrated, so. They have videos of all of it.
Yeah.
They're riding, they're riding on the street or down.
Down behind us.
The railroad, yeah.
These, these neighbors on my street are just so frustrated that they keep sending the videos to the police, the police is like, well, it's.
They can't.
A red helmet on a, on a, you know, green quad, like there's thousands of those, like you have to catch them in the act because you can give Johnny. The red quad and the green helmet on them, and how do you catch something unless they're not, if they're not in the act?
Or if you can read a license plate if they haven't even registered.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're moving fast, it's just frustrating, I mean, I feel for anybody that, that that noise disturbs.
Yeah.
Can do nothing but apologize.
Did they, I know they would come past our house, but you know, they, you know, it's still come past and then. Quite a while later, they didn't know, come past again, you know, coming, they, I think, you know, going back and forth.
Yeah.
A lot.
Uh, um. Just a couple of weekends ago, they were, they were going back and forth for, must have been thirty minutes, like they're racing, like. A- and that's a fun little track, I, I get it. I did snowmobiles as a kid, that was fun, but. It was on private property, it wasn't in a town or in parcel, so.
Oh, they wouldn't care.
It's, yeah, I mean, that comes up every year. Hopefully the folks move on and buy a swatch of land up in New Hampshire where they can just ride around, maybe.
All right, so Chief War checked it back and that training day is October seventeenth.
Okay.
It's a Wednesday. I'll be leaving.
You'll be out there riding again?
No, this time.
Uh, October seventeen.
So I move that we allow. For ATV training at ninety-one River Street on October seventeen. For the purposes of providing training to the police departments.
Second.
All those are better.
Bye.
Um, looking at our agenda, we have an appointment, uh, Insurance Advisory Committee for Ms. Erin Catan.
She can bonus place.
Yes, it does definitely makes the treasurer an ex officio member anyway, that's just the ability to get sworn in.
So I move that we appoint Erin to the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Second.
All those are better.
Bye. Great.
Um, looking at new business, now we're gonna vote to. Formally close and approve the special town meeting warrant for November fourteen, twenty twenty-two.
Pending, uh, council.
Pending council review. I know, uh, this was shared with us really this afternoon and we sort of discussed it over the last few meetings. Some of them are merely bookkeeping, but do we want to walk through each item? And ones that.
Do we still have the ability to remove stuff from this at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's once it's been approved, uh, is there's a point.
You can reopen in, in, in a moment or, or you can reopen, insert it.
Yeah.
As long as it's for the post to be good.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there was some drop dead date and then after that you just take no actions.
Prior to. And so it's like fifteen fourteen plus one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, for bookkeeping purposes, we do have the meeting currently scheduled. For November, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. At the Swallow Union Elementary School. Um, I've seen that go up on a variety of places, so the message is out there, but we'll keep doing it. We'll get our sandwich boards ready to go that day. Maybe a few days before.
Few days before usually.
Uh. Looking at the first article. And I'll sort of paraphrase these just to keep us on track. Um, if it's asking us if we'll hear a report from our Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, relative to the housing production plan. As someone who sits on that board, the NIMCO Representative Chris Hayes, right?
Yes.
Has been pretty helpful with sort of organizing a housing production plan that. Has currently expired for Duncel. And it's a good practice for us to, uh, bring it back to normal day standards. Some of the income disparity studies in there are fascinating, to be perfectly honest with you. Um, but I think it's gonna be a brief. Presentation and it's not really.
Yeah, I told him basically five minutes, and the other things, they are also gonna have a table outside, ending up literature. They, it's part of, part of the, um, the plan is creating public awareness.
They didn't community outreach.
It's not really a time for them, for the talent to question the.
Yeah, it's not gonna be.
The facts and figures.
Unupprable, it's just an, an old idea.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's certain benefits that having plan in place and. Protections that are offered as well as, you know, potential brand up and it's like everything else, state, you know, anything that you wanna follow.
Okay.
Yeah. So that should be interesting, and the article two will be. Uh, the resc- rescinding of a vote we made back in May of the. Town meeting for sixty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars for the school capital budget line. More than anything, this is bookkeeping because we're essentially. We didn't give the money to them because they ended up getting the vote passed.
So that money got wrapped up into the vote.
Yep, so now it's just pulling it back.
Yeah, I, I guess, one of the reasons I underlined, we send and just reallocate. And use these funds. I don't know if you technically wanna, this is a conflict, whether we wanna resend it or we just wanna reoffer on. And that might get better term to use and we send it, we send it, avoid the vote.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you reality, there's a difference, you know, that you can now take that money that you've already appropriated and reuse it of the premises. Which is gonna be part of the plan that we're gonna use about some of the things that are in the war.
So when it gets reallocated, it's gonna be, it's gonna be allocated to what, free cash?
No, it's, we're gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna keep the money, um. And use it for other purposes, it's, it's right now, it's just, yeah, if you did part of, I don't know if we call it free cash, per se. Um. Such, I also don't know.
Yeah, it'd have to go someplace, if we take it out of that.
It's just giving them a shot of a pound.
Back into general fund, no.
Isn't that.
And the free cash was, uh, uh. Fundamental of the two weeks ago, so we're probably within a week, we can have every free cash.
Okay. Yes, just.
Is it never a cable?
It did. It did.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so I guess we'll, we'll just verify the wording.
Yeah.
Or authorize. Yeah, uh, article three is, uh, regards to the TA. I'll read this one. Uh, to see if the town will vote to petition the Mass State Legislature to ratify a new town bylaw that creates a position of a full-time town administrator. Said bylaw will define this specific responsibilities for the TA position. Or to take any other action related here, there too.
So where are we with this, in our conversations with them?
Originally said that it wasn't correct.
Right.
It might be worth having a meeting with the government's committee to.
Yeah.
See in, in some input from councilors to. In Kevin, obviously, that's relative to how. We craft out something that can actually, the, the actual motion, uh, will be where, uh, the specific line we told.
Okay. Cause it's whether or not it's a bylaw or a special act bylaw, I think is what the issue was.
This, this is gonna be a town council discussion, because I don't think Paygo's just gonna have any acts of this, I don't think he adds a lot of value to anything, but that's not what I think.
I think he's done a good job.
Yeah. I know I agree with that, but. I think the issue is that town council wrote a letter or said to us that it's un- it's unpermissible the way it's written. That has to go back to them, I don't know if the governance committee is gonna restructure that in such a way.
I don't think the government committee has the expertise.
Right.
To make that determination, either it needs to be from my conversations with Kevin. That it needs to either be. Formed as a charter or a special act bylaw, it can't just be a bylaw, because that doesn't award the power that. This is aiming to do. So, I, I mean, I, the, I don't wanna rehash all this again, but that, that. Council opinion we got gave nothing, except to saying this, you can't do it that way.
Yeah.
So, so give us, then how do we do it? He knows what they were trying to do, so.
We want them to put something together that.
Yeah.
We can see at the town meeting and say, this is what it is, I don't think that's a governance committee issue, I think that's my issue.
No, yeah, with the governance committee is looking for, for guidance on how to craft this to make it.
Now talk to, um. Brian tomorrow.
I think we should ask him to come and sit for. I can just think, it's, it's need to benefit, in my opinion, things benefit of discussion. Uh, I don't think this text, email thing is gonna get this resolved. He's gonna have.
Well, at least he can prepare something.
He's gonna have.
Well, at least give us a, a starting point where.
We need to get to town meeting and something that is gonna fly. And it's gonna fly the state legislature. If we pass it at a town meeting and the thing's flawed and it goes into the state legislature and gets kicked out. This, this is just gonna become a circle of conversation. And the town administrator is gonna be the cream and the oreo cookie.
Well, what we don't know is if it's really the substance of the bylaw, because it really is verbatim minus a few here, things here and there to other town bylaws. I've read through probably fifteen of them and there are very, very subtle changes, just little things that we cater to us. But all those were either in a charter or a special act bylaw, so I, I suspect that it's not the substance of. What we've drafted, it's how we were trying to get it approved. So, but that's for council to sort out.
Uh, I can still, I'll talk to Brian tomorrow, and, and if we wanna have Brian in one, what meeting would you be willing?
Sooner than later, yeah.
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 Wanna add that to.
Well, we have a meeting on the twelfth, we have another meeting for the team.
When do you go on? I leave the seventeenth.
Did we have one Tuesday night as well? No, don't, no, we moved to Tuesday.
I had, I haven't written that, the twelfth is a joint meeting of the Environment Board.
Yeah.
That's assuming, and then I have the thirteenth.
And then the eighth.
At five o'clock.
You guys have.
Town Administrator Application Review.
That would be an appropriate night to talk to town council about it, as we're talking about town administrator.
Yeah, but aren't you interviewing, are we interviewing something?
Yeah, but they're not gonna be present.
Right.
We can do it.
Yeah, so we can, can we bring him in on thirteen? But he's gotta, he's gotta come in. Proud. He comes in and it's an exploratory conversation.
I, I, I would like him.
We're just gonna be wobbling around.
Okay, shift to the next article. Article four, uh, this is in regards to compensation for the forty hours that the town administrator would be working. And we, we have a number.
On one fifteen.
On one fifteen, yeah.
And currently budgeted nine and three and change.
Yep.
So, you know, that, that, once again, uh, we're, we're gonna have to, I'm working, already working with. Uh, Lisa, putting together a plan in terms of how we're going to post that all those articles. Uh, are paid for and, uh, I'm hoping that we'll have that done by the end of Tuesday. In time to go advisory slash board meeting.
Yeah.
Some of the things we're still trying to get information on.
So those intertwine, uh, number five. Um, to see if the town will vote to use free cash to raise inappropriate or transfer from available funds, some of money to fund. The first year of three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Dunstable and the Dunstable Police Union.
Can't talk about this. This is all dead.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, number six is to see if the town will vote free cash to raise or appropriate. Uh, available funds, uh, that funds necessary to fund salary step increases for non-union personnel.
That's the, this current year, we, as you're aware, with the after money. Sort of rectified situation for the past year, two, three years. We're gonna be doing the same for, uh. This year, whether the cost places are FY twenty-two.
Is that part of that sort of numbers study you and Lisa are going to sort of, is that part of like the numbers budget study you and Lisa?
Yeah, we're actually, we're trying to get a handle on exactly what that number is. We got a couple of scenarios.
Okay.
They're.
Number seven is related to free cash and the treater collector salary to offset. Cost association, costs associated with the transition to a new treasure collector.
This is my mistake, uh, when I, uh, knew, when we switched the way from town, the town clerk slash. Trevor collector. I didn't, I put it in based upon. Cause, uh, upon had been thirty, thirty years, he was making a substantial amount more. And I didn't see that as something, you wanted to start somebody out at the beginning step.
Yeah.
Of that chart, and that's the number that I used. And I should have, uh, uh, offset it. Uh, knowing that Bonnie was still there for an extra two and a half months, so. So that, once again, that's, and that number may be lower than that, since I can't guarantee that that's up or down.
Okay.
Once again, you're.
Yeah. I mean, it sort of is what it is, there's no, we know the high number. Yes.
No.
No. Two couple of weeks, right?
Yeah.
We'll have that number probably in a while.
Yeah. Um, article eight. To see if the town will authorize the Community Preservation Committee CPC to pay three thousand dollars for an FY twenty-two bill. Associated with the de-reading of Lake Massapeau. We need a nine-tenths vote for that topic. That comes up every couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, it's just shifting.
It's a twenty-one, right?
FY twenty-two. Shows from last year, yeah.
Actually, that's a, uh, article you've been. Written emails about.
Yes.
Article nine is similar, it's, um, paying a bill from the Shoba Analytical. Uh, using free cash, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, article ten, similar lens again, it's six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to offset a deficit to a safer grant. Received by the town, uh, Fire Department. So, for background, I think that was just something that the grant gave us X number, but maybe there's a delta between the value of the product and the grant.
I go back on mine.
Sure.
What was in the Shoba Analytical, water testing?
I honestly don't know, I don't have. The doc, it was submitted to me, I just put it in.
I would assume the show.
Yeah, Jake, do you have any knowledge?
I know.
Uh.
Okay.
Uh, article eleven touches on the Route one thirteen project. Uh, this is using free cash to transfer, uh, twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of creating a contingency fund. For the installation of a, of the waterline extension as part of the Route one thirteen project.
The, uh, we're still waiting on an ask you of T in terms of the revised number, as you're aware, they came back at the. A real line number.
Yeah.
That was based upon, you know, the program that had an outline of three steps and all of that, so we still have her back. Uh, Lisa and I are also exploring the possibility of, uh. Is a, an, an open grant, I guess, uh, for the one thirteen project, I gotta get in touch with Christina. Uh, there's a balance in that account that we could potentially use. The whole idea is to get it up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Four eighty in the after money, it was twenty, or just give us that whole fifteen.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, we might be able to get back to, if the money is on extended. From that, uh, the earmark, earmark for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, there's a balance in there, we're gonna see it. That has been al- not allocated, but, uh, they're waiting on something to pay.
Okay.
Not, and just say, hey, when we get to town. Not, and just say, hey, when we get the time.
And for someone like, uh, our road commissioner group, this, you know, having five hundred K is a lot more, is there, obviously there's twenty thousand dollars more bargaining power. Obviously, it's just a more robust number to ideally get this part of the project locked in. Okay.
So that's for.
Yeah.
The pipe, you get the pipe yet?
Uh, it's in the order.
Day by day.
Yeah.
If there's something falls apart, we're gonna have to figure out. Now we declare a surplus, print pipe, we can technically sell it to another community, dissolve.
You also gotta use the arc money. Like that, that will be.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh.
We can read back to that.
I'm sure we can find it.
It's not what I was. That would be the plan, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you can do, you know, declare the script, is it looking something six month. You could probably even profit off. Honestly, believing in going.
Yeah. Uh, article twelve is free cash, um, of fifteen thousand dollars to pre- conduct an actuarial. Study to determine the cost associated with the town offering post-retirement health insurance benefits.
Uh, once again, this made number of many changes, I've been playing telephone pad with the woman who's definitely studying that, uh, the eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, we had. All of them messed each other, I'll have a number for that, and if, if. That's for updating what they produced in two thousand and eighteen, I'm gonna also try to see if I can get another company to give us.
Yeah, and option B would be probably nice just for comparisons, right?
Yeah, see if it's, yeah. I'd, I honestly, you know, studies are a penny funny thing. And you get one company that will give you a price.
By spirit, whatever way you want to.
Yeah.
Because all of them are not hungry, they are for the work.
Yeah.
If it's the marketplace is, is, uh, is busy, then we, you know, that they're gonna take the best job that you get.
Yeah.
Slow, they're gonna grab onto, maybe even underpriced.
Yeah. It is something that, um, it's just a few towns in the Commonwealth, we do not offer health insurance to our people.
Yeah, there's only three towns.
And really, that's it, that's it?
Yeah, I, I believe that's a pretty accurate study, having talked to a couple of other TAs about it and. Chief or about it. Yeah, and. I know it's a, there's a large ticket number behind it, but I guess we gotta wrap our heads around, do we wanna be a pariah and not encourage long-term retention?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the downside of it, we wouldn't have people that have gotten found and probably failed ten years before.
Yeah.
Their retirement, so that they can get that benefit of, you know, when they retire.
Yeah.
You know, when that actuaries report came out, we didn't, she was not invited in to do a presentation, we. You know, it was a big number and we just disposed of it. It is, but I, and you know, I don't, you know, I don't know when you read her report. I, I questioned some of the numbers that she has in terms of people on the program. I don't know if she got those from, but we didn't, we never brought her in and did a download.
No.
We just said, oh, yeah.
That was a generally asked for subscribers that. From, um, losing the plan, how many people were close to retirement. Uh, what the potential cost for that is extrapolated with period time, using of the lar- large numbers, you know, basically.
And even, you know, from discussions with a few other groups in town, the numbers weren't far off from that report. From, you know, discussion we had with another group.
We can look at, but if those numbers are in fact, the numbers, this is, it's, it's an, it's unaffordable. You'd have to get an override from taxpayers to board it.
And maybe it's in the.
Override for other stuffs.
Spend seriously about. You know, we need the town off the ten.
Hmm.
We've been doing that for twenty years.
And then we get a big hit.
Well, the thing is, the first year you don't get. The increase in free cash that they need. To, to not only pay for lack here, but any incremental increases that have occurred in basic services. For the upcoming, you're gonna, you're gonna be laying a lot.
Yeah.
We're gonna be, it's gonna be.
Ugly.
And, and, uh, if I was here and was praying that, I would be advocating. Um, really need to start putting in financial house in the.
Yeah, right.
Um, article thirteen, as related to the fire rescue truck and they're asking for free cash. Uh, around fifteen thousand dollars for changes and surcharges.
Yeah, this came in on Monday, I'm not sure what the changes and surcharges are.
Yeah.
Cause he said, oh, Dave, I gotta, I, I need to put an article in. I basically wrote it, but I, I just used the language that he had related to me, so I don't know specifically what. Those changes and surcharges are, but I can get the breakdown from him providing the board with that.
Yeah, that'd be ideal, I mean, I know on a truck that costs what, two hundred and fifty K, doesn't seem like a lot of money. That's a, two hundred K, so.
Yeah.
But that, that, he'll give you those numbers.
Yeah, I think for reasons.
And they did put ten grand in the kidding from, I think ten grand for that trailer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they end up making, making money.
I haven't heard of, you know, then the fact that it was gonna, they got it was to play the surplus.
And they sold it for.
Almost double.
Yeah, nobody, nobody told me anything about all of that.
No.
And now you know.
I don't know if you can turn, turn that around, I don't know if that immediately goes free cash.
Well.
It's a receipt.
Yeah.
Uh, article fourteen, I'll sort of paraphrase this one as well, is asking the general court. To specially legislate the renaming of the executive body for the town of Dunstable. We are currently known as a board of selectmen. But we would prefer to the board to be known as the select board of the town of Dunstable. And we'll have the same powers of authority under the general law, special law, or any bylaw that's in place currently. Really, it's just getting more appropriate to the wacky world we're living in and being more sensitive to. You know. Being the twenty-second century. Welcome.
I'm tired of being called the town father.
Amen. Yeah, the world is more than just white-haired men walking around, so.
That is true.
So, I'm happy to. Think that's an important thing, important step for the town to, so.
It's, it's in line with most of the, but most of.
Yeah, they're all, don't.
It's more, it's more proper.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how to like, not sound not PC, but I think just get more current of the day that we're in. Um, article fifteen, this one is near and dear to my heart, because I read it a few times, um. The Greater Lowell Technical High School, um. Is asking their participating towns to authorize them to compensate their school committee representatives. To the tune of five thousand dollars a year.
Where's that money coming from?
That would likely come from us as participants in a greater.
It'll be, it'll be.
Based on them.
Well, and I had on paper the other day about that, and I, my rep said, you know, he was against it.
Yeah.
Smart answer.
Yeah.
And he, you know, he didn't get a paper returned and he brought it to the resident, so he was. Looking, according to the side of one.
Says Captain.
I mean, I. I, I'm just saying, I, you know. You know, here we got our rec saying he doesn't want to be compensated, but we're asking for being asked compensated.
Yeah.
Well, I think they put that question to all of them.
They did, it went, it was, it was like, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure it just has to pass them in the jury.
It does, so we, I mean, we could, it could be unavoidable, and it would just become a line item as an expense for the Greater Lowell. Technical High School. Yeah, it would, oh, they absolutely will, like, they just like whatever. Percentage it is.
I don't think it matters, but do we know where the other towns are at? Drake is not in favor? I get it.
I mean, this is, there is some history to board members getting. Benefits as a result of their participation in boards.
Big ones over the years have been helping.
Yeah, there, yeah, and I.
Yeah.
That's been a real sticker, and most of the communities where that has been brought up, they, they extended that, yeah. A lot of people were running for. School containing.
Just to get that benefit. Yeah.
Without any real concern about what they were doing for the town.
Yeah.
I've been in a community where that actually wasn't issued, so.
Yeah, really?
Do we know if one of their members is gonna come to the meeting to? Otherwise, you know, one of us, myself or you Dave is reading this aloud. And I'm gonna have a hard time not saying this is wacky. Uh, I mean, I guess if I were the Greater Lowell Technical High School, I'd maybe come. Advocate for it or explain to the town, like you would ask the fire department to tell us why they had fifteen thousand dollars. Why is it so important to that group? But.
But then it's gonna be, then it's gonna be the next group that wants to be paid and the next group.
Well, that's interesting, that's the whole concept, and when it's a high school, they should, they all get paid too. And we didn't go with that thinking.
I mean, I'm not in favor, but don't get me wrong, but.
No, I'm not in favor either.
But, you know, perhaps whoever's, I know that I could probably find the person or something, you know. Maybe we don't invite them, because it may railroad.
Well, let them come and have this say, and they can, I mean, that's what, this is all about, let them speak their piece. There's obviously a motivation behind it some way to say, you know, we need this money because of whatever, and they should get up and have their opportunity to say what they're saying. We'll say what we have to say, that's it, what people don't know, that's the end of it.
What there is.
These, this is the same group that wants, uh. Wants the Dunstable representative to have his paper signed and all the other towns. And.
That is the same group, yeah, that is true, yeah.
That's, that, and vice versa. You know, there's somebody on there with a student. Maybe involved on that.
So they should be paid.
Yeah. We'll see where it goes, I mean, obviously, I think, speaking of myself, I don't support advocating for that. Happy to. Voice that. That's what it is. Those are our current fifteen articles we have in place that. I don't have any necessarily discussion points, I think we've sort of discussed them as we walked through them, unless somebody wants to re. We group here, or what sort of, we just gotta close it out, basically.
So I move that we close. That we formally close the warrant for the special town meeting planned for November fourteen. Twenty twenty-two. Subject to be approved by Tom Constance.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great.
Fish and walk through. Um, let's see, I guess that leads us to old business, uh, actually thinking of the town meeting, we need to do printouts, like. I'm only asking this because I'm away Saturday through Wednesday this coming week. And do we need a prep work, I know we have a. Uh, attrition, uh, turnover in our offices, so we need to be aware of manpower, person power. For getting things set, do we, you know, how do you wanna organize that, and your side of things, Dave?
Generally, generally, what we would do a week or two prior to, we have a meeting with the moderator and myself. Town clerk, um, you know, what other officials were involved in the process. Last probably five or six town meetings have been outside for me, so the whole. Issue of getting chairs and sound systems goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that was a real challenge, uh, only because if. Now you're renting equipment or you're using, the town is using the original school.
Yeah.
Need to set the chairs up, who's gonna do that at school department? DTW, we need to coordinate the roads so that things are flowing.
Yeah.
Quarter parties, yeah. They have some of that, yeah, though, because the school district needs to prepare that well.
Yeah, we actually haven't notified them and, and they, once again, we have, that would be another person we'd have here, the meeting. And the school generally charges.
Yeah, I anticipate. Are we using? They have it?
No. Yeah, they've never.
Are we using the gym or the auditorium?
The auditorium.
We, especially, more than, uh, it allows more space and you have the side doors that can be opened as well.
Yeah.
That allow people with disability more free.
Use the gym.
So, I'm more, I'm probably, I was probably likely to favor the gym meeting, because you can still kind of social distance block.
Yeah. Okay.
The auditorium actually can use his cafeteria.
It's very.
That type, that's where the kids eat lunch.
Yeah.
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 How did you not know? Alright, so we, we have some time till we get to that point, if you want me to join that meeting.
Yeah. The chair, yeah, the chair would be the sound moderator, all people that are. You know.
In there.
Town clerk.
Yep. Uh, that looks us.
Actually go remotely, you go over article by article, what's wanted in terms of the super regard. Nine tenths, you know, it's a planning or zoning is two-thirds, I think.
Yeah.
You don't have any.
Just one, nine-tenths for the CPU.
This is actually, there's, I, there are a couple actually interesting. That you mentioned that, there's one article missing.
Uh, get to sixteen.
Uh, the police department had asked for nine hundred and five dollars for prior bill.
Oh.
They had ordered. Yeah, they asked for that, it was, uh, they ordered T P N gun.
Do we need to? Open the warrant and add that in.
And so we, I can add, you know, the warrant.
Add it in, let's have a, you'll have sixteen.
Yeah. But, I guess, phone, you could open the warrant.
To move, we open the warrant to insert the.
Police fifteen thousand. Yeah.
The police department for priority, the fact that there's a couple structural things that we can do, at least they're not talked about. Uh, in terms of, um, using that sixty-two thousand dollars that was allocated for capital. And, uh, we can do this, we can take the article that we're gonna use those funds for. And make it one article for the transfer from. Ex town to this account and that kind of thing.
That, that, that I understand.
And then the other thing you can do is do the same thing with prior year.
Yeah.
The problem with doing prior year articles is that are, tonight in an article. Uh, it has, it's two articles, there's three articles, one is analytical, there is.
The police one.
The police, and I thought it was the third one. Oh, the three dots, but that's.
Yeah.
So the two, you group them together, the problem is, is that the town speaker say, he said, wanna pay your hand, and we're not, but.
Right.
Analytical, so we're gonna make the most to split the article up. I think it's complicated, so if you.
If you lump it up.
That'd be more, well, once again, you're doing the transfers, you're gonna have.
Just pay.
Five people would say, you know, five articles that you may use the transfers for. And they'll say, geez, I, I wanna fund this, but I don't wanna fund that, and that sort of stirs.
Yeah.
Uh, Lisa said that Eric will take a look at it, he's the principal of the new town.
Mm-hmm.
Firm that we use, uh, and, and, uh, see if you can develop something, but I'm not so sure we wanna do that.
Seems cleaner just to have.
Yeah, because everybody gets to vote on the article where the money is being spent, you know, and, and.
Yeah.
And the key is making sure. And the key is making sure that article two. Adequately provides, gives us the ability to take money from that account, and you may, as part of the process, in the motion will take. You know. From the account number, you know, Capeline thirty-eight A, and transfer to whatever the account is to pay for. You know, for example, town administrator. Funding and full-time accounting manager, actually, the other question I had was in the forty hours, is it really gonna be a forty hour?
But what is our full time, isn't it thirty-eight? Thirty-eight is the number it was in our personal.
Why don't we just refer to.
Thirty-six.
Yeah, because some weeks there's more than others, and sometimes it's quiet on the front, and sometimes it's up.
And actually, in, in the high law. Says thirty-six point. Okay, motion closed, the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor? Um. Alright, so sixteen warrant articles. We'll get those over to town council. For review. And. Check on wording, a few things. Sounds good. Um. You're almost perfectly on schedule, and number five at five fifty. It's old business.
Is there any?
Yeah.
Laura.
Mr. Micker?
I know that's not gonna be the session here, but we do need to get. The finance issues wrapped up with the police department, and that's an executive session.
Hmm.
I actually, let's say that on the night of the meeting of the. A reviewing the town, I, I've sort of had to add certain things to the town engineer contract, I just sent the date up and take a look at the agenda. I added on, uh, the town engineer contract. An executive session that we're having with tournament K regarding Z B A case spending, uh, he's actually coming out. And I, and I spoke to Leo from the Z B A to, uh. To see if the Z B A wanna be here to participate in that executive.
Okay.
That's on that.
The remote night, right?
No. Uh, it's the thirteenth night.
Okay.
The Thursday. Today's the sixth or seven days out.
Yep.
Yeah, it was the thirtieth, the U T A applicants. Approved on an engineer contract discussion on T A position. Um. And then, uh, second section, Gileno versus Duncival, T B A, it's definitely turning okay. Like a bad.
The police department. Yeah, but then Eric owed us some numbers.
Actually, he has offered, and then he, I, I sent that out, that was relevant to the contract and everything. So we can't really talk about that right now.
No, I know.
But he wants to clarify in person, uh, what the deal is and, uh, he worked in markets.
He, okay. So I thought I was gonna send that out. Was I wrong?
I think he was gonna send it to, as a board as a whole. But.
He did send, he did send, oh, and he knows him, Jack, and so.
Yes.
Explaining how game up that number.
Think of the who's.
Yeah.
To do that.
Did you get it?
That's what I was just reading in the car.
Oh, so, yeah, I didn't, I, I, I didn't see that.
Yeah, it was, it was probably a couple days ago.
No.
I think it was C B yesterday or.
So on that meeting on the. On the, uh, thirteenth. That's when we're gonna try to close that issue with the police department.
Hmm. Eat your Wheaties, that'd be a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that is scheduled to start at five. But that agenda is pretty full. If the Z B A thing is mixed in with the same meeting.
I don't know how. Concentration.
It's not a confrontation, it's just time to have. Discussion of all these things.
I, I, I'm not really up to speed.
No, it's pretty involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It's, but I think the T A application review. I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say we haven't had an overwhelming level of interest so far, so that might be. Quicker than you anticipate.
I'm just saying, should we start early?
Do that.
No.
No.
About four?
I can do that.
I could probably do four or five, yeah. Yeah, let's see, four.
I mean, that's a pretty full agenda.
I will provide, um, board with the applications, a couple of resumes. Um, prior to.
Is it still under five?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I did Brian.
As I buy. Um, any other old business topics, things for us to consider, but I'm not thinking of. I will shift to the town administrator report, one minute behind schedule. Look at my phone.
Uh, just a few things, one we had in the top head, but let's say. Uh, it was fairly well attended, we discussed all the forms, this change, payroll change, form, uh. The prevailing way to know that again, just make sure that we want to know what that is about. And we had a little bit of a raw paper discussion on several of the big things that were. Going on, give us about it, so it was pretty benign. Um, I, uh. I spoke with the woman that had, uh. Been recommended, uh, to us, uh, who's part of the O E R, of the E E A, whatever, um, regarding the program. That we discussed, uh, that had been suggested by the town engineers that we, uh, had, for, maybe give us an overview.
What was her name, I think she called.
Yeah, she said she did call.
Yeah, actually, I was like.
I, once again, playing telephone.
Yeah, all good, yeah.
Um. And it's Michelle.
Yes, that, that, yeah.
So she's, I, I'm trying to get her to, and then on, on that.
Okay.
Because we, you know, that's a good thing, I think on those, the D M issues. Once we get certified as an M V P community, it's great money to help us pay for those.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Some of those may be big dollars.
And our town engineer, it's nice chatting with them, but that means she's pretty knowledgeable and.
And they want, they actually, they want, to, once again, we're. One of, a very few number of communities that have become a, uh, M V P.
Yeah.
Community. Um, still waiting on the number to mask the O T on the water line.
Hmm.
Look, look a license. I don't know what to do with that, we, we don't have a state rep, you know, we don't have anybody advocating. On our behalf, I, I did give a thought to contacting a, a couple of the state reps that I know that aren't. From the district union, from the area, and seeing if they could advocate for us, that's a possibility.
But we'll have a state rep on the month.
But you wanna wait?
I think this thing's been sitting for six years.
I didn't call them, honestly, I, I actually looked like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
When did it start? I would just put that way. I'm gonna get a rep in a month, month from today, right, I think.
The, the fear is that once Baker leaves office and whoever's in that seat, they may not be as interested or prioritizing signing. A liquor license. Because you eventually.
That, honestly, that's a standard thing.
Yeah.
This is very unusual, that, you know, if you had had a state rep, this thing would have been done.
We've had a state rep.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, four years ago, we did.
But I'm just saying, getting it through. The third reading in the house, it's approved in the senate, it's getting that third reading, sending it to back to the house.
There's no one there to care.
And then sending to the government, I don't think regardless of the governors, they get, no governor's gonna.
Deny it.
It's a petition, and the, and people have voted for it, why would that, wouldn't it be in their best interest to do that?
As long as it was legal, yeah.
Yeah, because I do.
There's just no one there to, like, sweep it up.
Advocating, yeah.
Uh, insurance advisory committee, uh, a meeting with, uh. Kevin Baykos, uh, Matt Wiggler, Aaron and I, we're gonna go over some of the. Preliminary numbers of even seeing another community, these, uh, based upon, he's our experience consultant. And, uh, we're gonna be calling in I A C meeting to discuss what options are available to the town.
Hmm.
Uh, Maya, you know, and there, you know, there.
Yeah. Well, they, they played the field well for us for a few years, so is that.
Well, you're. You know.
Yeah.
Ends up to the line and saying, we're gonna go up the bid, and they come back and say, oh, well, no.
Yeah.
Or one percent, you know, that, it's a, it's a cat, and that's not unique to. Duncival.
Yeah, everywhere, yeah.
Uh, we got the medics rates in there. There are, I mean, no one, so that's a good thing, that's one of the things to get into.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing I had, I was driving around on the weekend, and I was in Mendon, which is a town next to us, and. I didn't have it, and we don't have it much, but a lot of communities have these, we do these voting boards. And I took a couple, one in Mendon, I was gonna send them out on my mind, I remember today.
Hmm.
Um, they're feeling, you know, that they could be decorative. I mean, in, in, when rather than put sandwich boards out there, maybe finding a piece of. Land near me, on the river Tom is.
Hmm.
Uh, seeing if maybe we can get the three hundred and fifty committee to. Help us, you know, generate some money and get and see if this is happening about that, you, when I tell you the good news, when I send them out.
Yeah.
They'll have a better sense of what I'm talking about. But actually, the three towns we have two of them. Yeah, I'm not there.
Yeah, yeah.
We had, that's a three towns, but you know, there's one, there's a village with a son, and these three towns, they, they're like two little boughs. The, the town forests.
Yeah.
So each section had their own voting board, and the one we spread out right in the top, center of the rotor.
Yeah.
Everybody who rode on that rotary could see it, and it's on both sides. So, you know, the volume of traffic that flows by every day, and you can do. The, like, uh, overhead vendors, congratulations, they have a form, they submit it, they say, do they wanna put up, they'll have a hand in being suffer of the grain.
Hmm.
Uh, and, you know, you're limited to not talk, so.
Yeah.
But. For a nominal amount of money in terms of material and buying some in town, it's he and.
Yeah.
They could build it, and you're using some kind of, uh, a, uh. Not a specification, but some kind of a visual plan.
Yeah.
So that you know exactly what we're getting, you know, oh, geez, that looks like hell, how to play, but I, you know, having an agreement as to what it's gonna look like, and have it be. Uh, architecturally correct, and it's been something with the town and property.
Yeah.
The one in Mendon had a little barn, it's wrapped in. Cool.
Yeah, we need something to get the word out about stuff, so.
Is this, uh, is this, uh, uh, an electron?
No. No, it would be the letter.
Okay.
The big thing would be somebody changing the letter, he's gonna have somebody that's going.
Well, we'd do it on the sandwich boards and.
I did, I did that one for the election, I think.
Did you, it's you, I.
Given that. Senator, and they're all probably done, so residents go to the work, but coming back.
Yeah.
That, you know, that, that would be an easy way to communicate. The other thing the town might wanna consider for the cost money is having some kind of a, like, uh. It's like a reverse nine-one-one, where, for example, a classic example would have been. Uh.
We can't that.
The, uh.
We had water.
Yeah.
You know, all of a sudden, you know, we got water, that has equalize. And how do we communicate to them? And what you can do is send a, yeah, they. It often is, in some communities, allow, require that the resident sign up for. Other, like, if E nine-one-one, it, it lasts for the whole community.
Yeah.
And you get a phone call, and, and they say, oh, you know, this is a, uh, uh. An announcement or notification from the town of Duncival, please make sure, you know, we detected coal iron and water, please make sure that you boil it.
A lot of people don't have landlines anymore, though.
But you could register.
You have to register your cell or your email.
But the thing is, though, is that you can, it, depending, there's a certain level of sophistication to it, because you can then geocache it in terms of, say, we only wanna send it to. A part of town where.
The water users.
Where the water users are, yeah, are being affected by this, so we're not bothering everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two days before the town meeting blasted up, the town meeting's coming out, are you there, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
It's a, they're not cheap, they're buying seven thousand dollars. National, and then it's in charge of. It works, it absolutely works.
Yeah, that's something that, in the event, our, our.
No, we didn't.
Through, through John Redd.
No. Usually have black wood connect.
And then something called like rave or something.
Rave, yeah, raves, police department.
Yeah, you can't use the, the real reverse nine-one-one as a police, so you may, you know, you kind of. Talk with nuclear contamination.
Get the shelter.
Turn over on the aisle, everybody. Run.
Yeah. What's the name of this program that you?
I can get you, we, we actually implemented one, uh, and then switched companies, because in front of the.
Yeah.
I, it's chopping ahead.
We're looking into.
It's money well spent, if you wanna communicate things.
Yeah.
We get, that's one of our greatest faults, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, yes, long, it's down, and you had a reporter, there's a lot of towns that have worked in, there's a reporter, every single meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, everything that's said at the meeting, all the decisions that are made are in the news paper. You know, so.
Yeah.
It's sort of a mixed blessing.
It is.
Yeah.
Having done this quarter, the number of times, it's not always a good.
Third day. We accept the minutes of August sixteenth.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Yes, Jim.
Just, I have a couple of questions before you guys close down here. And I thought maybe. Uh. David might mention them, but as in passing. I would like to know the number one. Uh, is the R F D. Closed for the. Portable housing at this point?
October seventeen, they closed.
Seventeen, that's the, um.
The latest one.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not closed, okay, thank you. Also. I heard something about some kind of a. Uh, as far as union school is concerned, I heard something about possible warrants.
Yeah, I actually did, uh, include it in the email, I sent it regarding the lipolations. The money hasn't been put in. As part of the bond. Uh. The, once again, the problem is. The governor hasn't signed off on it, he's leaving it for the next governor. To make a decision on what. Things are funded as part of that allocation of the bond. And they generally don't do that till the spring, so a lot of that is expensive. Where we're standing, there is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, and I, I, once again, that's me, somebody sitting in my seat being aggressive enough to keep on top of it, with the senator's office and. The new state rep and continually following, you know, the governor's office and it's. Making them aware that that's something that, uh. That's bad.
No.
How much was, how much?
It was a hundred fifty, that was the deal.
Fifty thousand.
And.
Like, wow.
Not, not that I really wanna go down this rabbit hole, but. And I keep just forgetting to respond back to one of our school member reps about. That. That project.
Yeah, we didn't.
We never got a, yeah, we never got a.
I, I don't really have the capacity to be a P M for that project, like, I, I just don't. So. I don't. I don't know if a spec board member should be the, the town's P M, you know, the one that's. Working with the school to be the middleman, the swing person of information. I don't know how to do that, like. I just don't have the time.
Yeah, you'd be, what you're referring to is an honest project. Nope, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, you don't need to know, you must support, you're really working on, yeah.
No, I better not be.
Yeah, and like.
Generally, in a situation where there's uh. Either renovations or, and it's, it's not a a major reconstruction project. Uh generally, a building inspector would serve as sort of a clerk of the work.
Yeah.
And that for even oversee, check in and so.
Uh he works like one day a week, though, so I don't think.
Yeah, and that's another, that's a subject for another discussion.
Yeah, so.
He certainly has the time to anticipate in that. And he has the expertise.
Yeah, we got to compensate him, he's one of our highest earned hours, hour here.
He gets twenty eight thousand dollars for one hour a week.
So, I mean, it's a.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's something.
But I guess in theory, should it, should it be the school, like, like, we own the building. We own the land.
Well, the school originally submitted the application to the C P C for this project.
And then.
Like, two years ago.
Then they were, and I know we have like two representatives. And I got the impression that I'm not really ducking the the call with this person, but like, I just don't want it to be like, alright, can you just do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I agree, I don't know, I don't know.
Particular expertise of that.
Yeah.
Project as well as the process of. Payment and following certified payrolls and all this is. It's not, it's not, it's not, that's not, it's not something for us.
But I also don't, at the same time, I don't want it to not happen, because they're like, well, we, you know, Dunstall isn't interested in stepping up to have someone do it.
No, but the building inspector should be able to fill in that role, that he should be.
In the school, as a show, yeah. Who's responsible for maintaining and making cap, you know, planning for capital improvements for all of the voters. Getting the estimate, saying which is what.
Well, right, and it it was the school committee that put this forward to the C P C here.
Their, it's their responsibility, I believe.
Yeah.
I am, to my understanding that it's uh. You know, in the uh. In the agreement that, uh, you know, they're responsible for maintaining. These uh buildings, you know, and that, and uh. Well, I mean, being a little more done to the building and.
Well, what they were asking for wouldn't have qualified for C P C funds, and then it kind of took on a life of its own with the historic committee and, um, but in order to. Truly preserve the building. It needed restoration work.
Uh, well, we, should we think about a building?
Think about the what?
A building committee.
Meeting.
You would need a school rep on there, you would need the one, the facilities peoples from the school. You would need a C P C and a historical rep, you got. Four or five people already. That's, that's a lot of people that.
That's a lot.
It's the same people, you guys know, you're, it's the same.
Same.
Same twenty people doing stuff in town over and over again.
Wow. That uh. Is that, we didn't somewhere, so. We, we can't just say. You know, I had, I had a few people written down on my list now. Uh we can't just say, you, uh, you know, we need somebody to. The, to look out on this building.
You could form an ad hoc committee. I just don't know what type of weight you're gonna get unless you have some really. Inspired members. And I am, I imagine you know how that goes.
We could engage. Someone to work. For us, a contract, and someone's gotta be proficient with.
Like Henry Fontaine, a good one.
Henry would be a guy that would do it, actually would, but.
But he's gonna want.
It'd be.
Ten grand, something like that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But the risk of not having that individual with that caliber of capabilities is that the project gets all over the place, we end up with. Change orders that we don't have the money for, and schedule that doesn't get followed.
Or windows that are wide open.
Yeah.
That's the project manager.
Yeah.
Would, you know, take a look at. You know, usually it's a much bigger project where you have O B M, and O B M is usually an architect, they're staffed, they need some that. And when a change order comes in, they 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 serve the work, so you know, they pour the concrete for the foundation, they make sure that. They have people sampling the concrete to ensure that certain viscosity.
Yeah.
Proper rebar and whether the thing's level and, you know, they're putting it over peat moss and. By here, it's now sinking, you know.
It happens.
We had a problem.
Yes.
Well, if we hire something.
You can, that's what we were just talking.
Yeah, I mean, if we like, like, the people went to the uh section. You know, that's what they do, you know, we hired somebody like that. They come in and Howard's, you know, said, wasn't that number in the. Wasn't the cost of that uh. Um. You know, the project manager in that number that they gave.
I don't think so. I don't think there was a, was there one in there? On top of the nine, the eight fifty it was, right? Or nine?
Well, it was almost nine hundred thousand then.
Yeah.
And I hope so.
So.
More now, but yeah.
So, I mean, long story short, I'll, I'll follow up with this school, remember. I will solve myself of responsibility.
Yeah, it's not for us.
Uh. And and though I, I support the concept of the project. I'd love to see it done to historical standards and meet all the necessary credentials. I think they are best served to work with the community preservation committee association group between both towns to get it. Speced out properly.
Okay, well, since now that. You want the school to work with the community preservation?
To figure out who to hire to be that project manager.
Well. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if uh. If any of us are in more of a qualif on a move there for that kind of job. That's why we were hoping to get the the school, I've got to be able to say, they have somebody over there that does it.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I'm curious what the school committee's plan was to follow through with this.
There was, their plan was to dump it uh all out.
That's what it was. I know this.
Yeah, I know, you know, because I know who originally submitted this. So.
Yeah. And uh. I'm not a historical building expert and I.
Nor am I.
My first gut instinct was to go a totally different way out there, so.
Yeah.
Nobody liked that idea, so.
Oh, your first instinct?
Bulldoze it.
Oh.
Bulldoze it.
You said that about.
I I think I told it right to their face, I said. The the building, you, to get that building to A D A standards is like a four million dollar deal. And we don't have a.
What building is this?
Swallow Union to get it to A D A.
Well, we just put the outside now, we're not.
Right.
Put an elevator and then you're gonna have to.
Widen all the stairways.
Every seven feet, and then a plug. Put cars, handles on the doors.
And in six or seven years, when we expand the school, they're gonna look at that building and be like, gosh, should we just knock the building down?
You're preserving a piece of history, that's gotta be worth something.
Yeah.
Pictures, Joan, pictures are great.
I'm ready to go home. What else we got?